Welcome you to Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, the Board of County Commission meeting. Our invocation this morning will be read by Ricky Bobby and Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Goddard. Would you all please stand? Thank you.
Good evening. You up here, Dave?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Good morning.
Let me share some scripture with you here this morning. Comes in Book of Second Chronicles quickly, and it's out of chapter seven, verse 14. It says, "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, and I'll hear from heaven and I'll forgive their sin, and I will heal their land." And it's no secret that we've got a broken world that we live in, and it's just wonderful to live in a community that embraces prayer and has leadership and embraces God. We adjourn in prayer. Our Father God, as we come here today, Father, I just thank you. I thank you for another day to serve. And Father, just coming here today and opening this session, Father, I'm asking that you just to provide wisdom to these gentlemen and lead in a godly manner, that just provide the leadership that we need to take us into the future, Father, and that your will be done in all things. Bless each and every person here. And Father, as we come to talk about the future of our community, Father, while our children, our future at stake, we ask that you touch the hearts and the minds of this community, the denizens that live here, and the folks that are here today and temper our tongues, that we understand one another, that we make an attempt to reach out. Father, we live in a broken world, but today, let peace start right here in this place. Protect our peace officers, protect our children, protect our denizens. Father, we just love you, and we thank you, and we praise you, in your holy and precious name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ricky, thank you for that wonderful prayer. Wait a minute, before you leave off, you might have heard his voice on WHIF. He also does a lot of community work with hospice, and he also gave a kidney to Brother Kirby Kennedy recently.
Incredible.
So you are a great guy, and you're a serviceman. We appreciate your service to our country. Thank you.
And he plays drums very well.
Yeah. Little point of privilege I'm going to take this morning, if you don't mind, we have a special guest in the house with us today in our meeting facility. We all belong to a wonderful association called the Florida Association of Counties, and it's 67 counties strong in the state of Florida. And we have our executive director here, Ginger Delagog, and I've asked her to come up and speak to us a little bit today. She's making her rounds throughout the state, and we've been blessed to have her presence with us today. So Ginger, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I greatly appreciate it. I am Ginger Delagog, the Executive Director of the Florida Association of Counties. We are based out of Leon County, the capital county in Tallahassee, and actually only about two blocks away from the capital. And so we are your home whenever you happen to have work in Tallahassee, either in the capital, with the governor's office, or any of the state agencies. We welcome you and invite you to come by and be able to use those facilities that you have actually invested in. Make it your home. We have computers available for commissioners and county staff who are coming to town from out of town. You can also use our facilities if you need to have meetings with any agency heads or any other individuals in Tallahassee, or also to meet with our staff. So wanted to let you know that our door is open to you, literally just a couple of steps away from the capital. Primarily this morning, I appreciate the chairman's invitation for me to come, and what I really wanted to do is to very quickly, but very sincerely, say thank you. And to say thank you to this commission, as well as to the county, for the longstanding and very deep relationship that this county has with the Florida Association of Counties. We stand with all small, medium, and large counties in the state of Florida, being able to represent you all and your interests, not only in Tallahassee, in the state capital, but also in Washington, DC. We have recently expanded our ability and opportunities for, again, small, medium, and large county commissioners and members of county staff all across this state to advance some federal interests, not the least of which include enhanced ZICA funding for all sorts of communities back here in the state of Florida from the federal government. But we represent you in Tallahassee. Our mission is very clear and very simple, but not easily executed, and it is to do everything that we possibly can on your behalf to defend home rule for you. And this day and age, and with this particular environment that we find ourselves in, home rule is absolutely under assault. What we have found over the course of the summer through some research that we have been doing is that it isn't just a Florida-specific movement. This is something that is national in scope. And so we are starting to call it the National Preemption Movement, and are finding it to be a huge threat for the way we live here in the state of Florida. And so absolutely everything we are doing now at the association level is driven to ensuring that you all, in good times and in bad times, which I understand this is a really tough budget year for you all, that you have the tools that you need to help your community make the decisions that are the best for your community. And that's what home rule is all about. And for this, the third-largest state in the country, folks don't really even realize, sometimes even in Tallahassee, how diverse this state is, and how many small communities and rural communities we still have left in the third-largest state of this country. We even have counties that have incredible numbers of miles and acres of rural land. A lot of folks forget that Palm Beach, yes, has magnificent world-class beaches on the coastline, but also has acres and acres and acres of agricultural land and poverty like some of us have never seen, and that is just within one county. And that's just a description of how we all need as many tools as we can possibly have in order to help govern back home in a way that makes sense for our community, because what's right for Putnam County and for Palatka and for this community is certainly not necessarily even going to be right for McLennie, just right up the road and a little north of you. So you all should have the tools at your disposal to be able to protect your local taxpayers' investments and make the decisions with their input that is the best for you, and that's what we are here to do. And so I wanted to say thank you, and to make myself available for any questions that you all may have. Your chairman is incredibly involved with our organization at some of the highest levels of leadership. He also serves on our county foundation board, which is our 501(c)(3) foundation that is dedicated to education and research, spends a lot of time with UF IFAS out in the field, and we are even investing and expanding those opportunities into the small and medium-sized counties all across the state of Florida. So we are here for you all, and I'm available, Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Ginger?
No.
Any comments?
I'll be doing.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We really appreciate your support.
We appreciate you coming down today, and thank you again.
My pleasure.
And we'll see you soon.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, we're going to go to our next item, approval of the minutes of the August 8th, 2017 Board of County Commissioner meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Number three on our agenda, Mr. Ed Fuller with Crime Stoppers. Mr. Fuller, you have the floor, sir, so thank you for coming today.
Thank you all. Good morning. Honorable Chair Larry Harvey, Honorable Bill Pickens, Honorable Buddy Goddard, and Honorable Sheriff Deloche. My name is Ed Fuller, and I'm the President of the Northeast Crime Stoppers Florida Organization. It is my distinct honor and privilege to be here today to recognize one of our finest here in Putnam County, Sergeant Kenneth Roberts. Kenneth Roberts also, and I apologize to he and his wife, I believe it's their wedding anniversary today, so he came here today at my request to get this honor. So I apologize to your wife. I don't know how do you make that up on your anniversary, but I owe you one. That said, the men and women in law enforcement, if I have one issue with them, they're so humble, they don't take, I guess, should we say publicity well when they do a super job. In Putnam County, we have a fine sheriff, we have a wonderful sheriff's department, and the men and women who serve Putnam County do an outstanding job. So we don't, at our law enforcement banquet in May, Sergeant Kenneth Roberts was recognized as Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. And I wanted to tell the public officials and the public just how great our sheriff's department is, and certainly Sergeant Roberts is representative of that. To give you an idea of what happened and how he won this award, Patrol Sergeant Kenneth Roberts was born in Virginia Beach, Virginia, to a military family. In March of 2016, Sergeant Roberts responded to a call regarding a suspicious person walking along Roy Road tracks near Palatka. Along with two deputies, Sergeant Roberts tracked the subject several miles through the dense vegetation, over several small creeks, pushing the subject to the edge of the St. John's River, where he was found hiding under fallen trees. Now, that's instinct, and that's professionalism. That's that go-go attitude. That's never give up. And once in custody, the subject admitted to numerous burglaries and led authorities to the location of a man's body he was responsible for killing, as well as the firearm used in the murder in the man's vehicle. The arrest of this dangerous individual was due to the perseverance and leadership displayed by Sergeant Roberts. His insistence on tracking a person on what appeared to be the only minor offense of trespassing resulted in the apprehension of a violent career criminal. Sergeant Roberts is married to Jamie Roberts, and Jamie, I apologize. That's the kind of law enforcement you have in this community. That is dedication, that is professionalism, and that needs to be honored, and that needs to be commended, and I thank you for allowing me to come here and retell that story, because Sergeant Roberts is indicative of the wonderful professionalism that we have here in Putnam County. So if I may, I'd like to call the sheriff up, please, and Sergeant Roberts, to present, re-present this plaque of Officer of the Year, and also a picture of that prestigious moment when he received this award amongst his peers. And thank you so much. (applause)
Would you come up here, Commissioner? Would you come down there with you?
I can photograph the other.
I mean, you can picture him. I don't want my picture.
Do you want to care what he said? Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you're here.
Sure. Okay.
Mom's short, so... I'm tall, so I'm always there. Everybody in? Everybody get in?
Okay. Yeah, there you go.
You get them where they're supposed to be.
Big smile. One more. Okay, very good.
Happy anniversary, too.
(laughter)
Sheriff, he's not working today, is he?
(laughter) I think we'll give him the rest of the day off.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Fuller, thank you for coming today. We appreciate it, and we enjoy that wholeheartedly. We're going to recess our, excuse me, recess our Board of County Commission meeting. We have a 9:10 solid waste collection meeting, so we're going to recess this meeting and gather back up here in one minute for our solid waste collection and disposal district. So mayors, if you could make your way up, and I think you're, we have some seats right here, since there's only a couple, we can put you right up here with us. Mayor Peterson, you want to take that side, and Mayor Hill, you want to go that? I think their names, Susan, are their names? Would you bring their names over? Or Tabitha's got them. Meantime, I'll recognize Leota Wilkinson. She's in the audience. She's Special aide to Representative Bobby Paints, so we welcome you today in our presence. So I don't know if you've got to meet Ms. Delagog, our Florida Association of Counties Executive Director, but avail yourself before she has to leave today, okay? All right, we ready to go? We're going to call the meeting of our solid waste collection and disposal district to order. It is actually 9:15. The first order of business is item A, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, July 25th, 2017. The chair will entertain a motion. Have a proper motion by Mayor Hill.
I'd like to make one change or one suggestion.
Well, let's do it, and then we'll have discussion.
I'll second it.
A proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Further discussion? Mayor Peterson?
Yes, under present, we have Commissioner Harry Banks, which is correct, but he is also my vice mayor, and he was in the capacity as vice mayor when he was here.
Okay, so let's let the record show that he's also commissioner and vice mayor. Mayor Hill, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Pickens, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay, so let the record show that. If there's no other further discussion about the minutes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. The conversation now goes to the review and certified special assessment role for implementation fiscal year 1718 solid waste resolution. Mr. Manning, do you have this item?
Yes, this, as you recall from the last meeting, the rates were decided upon by this board. Our ordinance requires then that, at this point, the actual assessment role be approved by the board, and that is based upon, you will see the memorandum we received from Mr. Parker, the property fraser, on July 6th, certifying to you all the role as he has established it. So this is the final step in establishing the rates and the role for fiscal year 1718.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Gass, would you like to add anything to the conversation? You're good? Okay. Committee members, discussion?
When were the last time the rates were changed?
Ms. Papel? I believe we changed them last year. We change them every year.
Yes, it fluctuates every year, and these new rates were voted on on July 25th, 2017.
And they represent a slight increase.
I see three and three-quarter percent overall, I think, if my math is correct.
I didn't calculate the percentage, but that sounds...
Yeah.
Okay.
Last year, I believe they went down some, if not mistaken, and this year, they're going back up a little bit. But that's based on our, it's not a tax, it's a fee to our residents for services provided. So, Mr. Gass, you do want to say something? Okay.
I can explain that a little bit, is that the hurricane that we had this year, we had to pay 1.25 million dollars out of our existing budget for this year to cover the expenses for that hurricane, and we have no idea when that money's going to come back into our budget. So we have to price the system to be able to provide the services in a budget that is established.
And what you used there was reserves that you had built up for future expansion.
Yes, it was my reserves for future expansion that I had taken the money out of.
Okay. We will be getting, that was one question I asked when we were in the White House when Mr. Manning and I were at that meeting, and that was one thing we did talk about, was the FEMA reimbursements. And so it is being sent back to the state pretty quick. We just got to get our money back from them.
It is. Unfortunately, debris removal is a very complex situation, because we've got thousands of tickets, and they have to review each one of them and make sure everything is correct. It is time-consuming. I wish it would be a lot simpler, but FEMA looks for anything that they can keep their money in their pocket for, so they scrutinize pretty much everything. And it is, I mean, it's a time-consuming process for us to fill out the paperwork during the collection process, and then it's a time-consuming effort for them to go through and review all that paperwork. We've got boxes and boxes of nothing but paperwork.
Mr. Gass, since you mentioned FEMA, would you please explain the reimbursement process? Because it's not a dollar for a dollar from FEMA, so...
No. What happens is they have a tiered system now for reimbursement, which, within the first 30 days, FEMA will reimburse 85% of the cost. In the next 60 days, they will reimburse 80%, and then after that, they will reimburse 75%. And that is a cost that we end up bearing. We never get 100% back.
And the state of Florida kicks in 12 and a half.
12 and a half percent.
12 and a half. You know, it was kind of frustrating for me as a commissioner, I mean, no more, where the storm's over with, that we're telling people, get their stuff out to the road as quick as possible, and they're still reeling from the storm, you know? I mean...
That, well, the reason that we do that is because of the accelerated reimbursement that FEMA offers, because the quicker you get it off the road, the quicker you get it picked up, the quicker the community can get back into its normal operations. And that's what FEMA wants to do, is try to get a county back to as normal as possible, as quickly as possible. And, you know, it's a situation where we know that we're going to have some that's going to be 90 days out, because somebody has an eight-foot diameter oak tree fall, you're not going to be able to get that out, because everybody in the county who is a tree service company is booked up for the next month. So it does take a while. That's why it does extend out past the advanced payments that FEMA makes, is because some people just aren't able to do it, and we're not going to leave those people behind. We set a, you know, try to get that all in in 130 days, 120 days, and get everything covered that we can, but most of the time, that's two or three, sometimes even four rounds within an area. The south end of the county this year had four rounds in part of the county, because it was the worst hit this year.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, another hit that the county had is, you know, the county waived the tipping fees during that period of time, so folks could go ahead and, those that were bringing their own debris didn't have to pay, and that's something, unfortunately, that is not FEMA reimbursable, so we've had to absorb that loss of ordinarily, which would have been revenue, in this fiscal year as well.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Manning. Many members, any other further questions for any, for Mr. Gass or Mr. Manning? All right, hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion? For the, what was it? We have a resolution here.
It's under Recommended Action on page 15.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the approved, the special assessment role for implementation of the fiscal year 201718 solid waste rate resolution.
We have a proper motion by Mayor Peterson.
I'll second it.
Have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Okay. Four to one, so we passed. Thank you very much, and that will conclude our solid waste collection and disposal district meeting. We'll adjourn that meeting, and we'll take a two-minute recess. Thank you for serving. Many commissioners, for August 22nd, I've asked Mayor Hill to stay at the podium with us, or stay up here at our desk. He is losing his, might be losing his city manager, and he wants to join the ranks of the county commission. Now, I'm teasing. Mayor Hill and I, another little point of clarity here, we had a conversation yesterday, and I think it behooves us to have this conversation here in this arena. So Mayor Hill, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you.
All right. Good morning. And in recent, I guess in the recent weeks that have just passed, there've been some very critical things that have happened in this country. Overall, there've been a lot of issues as it relates to things that have gone on in America over the last few years. We found ourselves as a community on red alert concerning an issue that came up on last Friday. I had an opportunity to speak to some local leaders and to actually sit down and caucus and come up with ideas of what needed to be done to preserve this community in the eyes of any oncoming threats that may be spinoffs of what's taking place in Charlottesville and around the country. When we look at America as a whole, it's very alarming at the state of affairs within this country. We find ourselves in a position, as Americans, where we're as close to a civil war as we've been since 1865. And oftentimes, I think we take those things for granted, but we're all just one event away from being Ferguson, we're one event away from being Dallas, we're one event away from being Charlottesville. And Putnam County as a whole, I applaud this community for the way that we've responded to many of the events that have taken place here. There've been several opportunities for people and vigilantes to come into this community and just tear us apart, but there's a greater part that has to be played by the citizens of this community, and I've prayed about it over the years, and I've talked to many leaders, and I've talked to many friends about what's going on in Putnam County. And, you know, and it takes me back to scripture, and, you know, the greatest commandment that we have is to love the Lord our God with all our heart, our mind, and our soul, but the second commandment, second greatest commandment, is to love that neighbor as thyself. And if we're going to progress as a community, we've got to continue to progress in love and in unity. And one of the things that we did back on January 4th of 2015 was come up with a concept called One Palatka Under God, which brought people from all different walks of life together for the simple purpose of love, for the purpose of gathering together regardless of what historical harms may have been in place, regardless of what ideologies may be different. But love is the one thing that allows us all to be bound together. And when I look at what's going on in our community, when I look at the challenges concerning Confederate monuments, and I look at where we are from a social justice standpoint with Black Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter and all these other things, the only thing that really matters is that we're all Americans and that we need to band together. And when people are hurting, one of the best ways that you can heal is through conversation, through logical conversation about what it is that causes you to be offended, what it is that causes the perceptions and the stereotypes to be there. And I definitely thank you, I thank Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Harvey has been very gracious to allow me to have this moment to speak, and he's also committed to standing with me. And I think it's time for Putnam County to have a real conversation, a real conversation that addresses historical harms and how we can bridge the things from the past in order to preserve a brighter future. When I look at this community as a whole, I see wonderful things happening for the first time, and it's something I may not have ever imagined in my life, I see people coming together and planning events to memorialize our increase in social justice. Next week, the football field is going to be named the Bennett Cooper Field, because of two men during integration, particularly Willard Cooper, who gave up his seat as a head coach from Central Academy High School, and he worked closely with Billy Bennett, and those two men became drawn majors for integration and social justice within this community, and their sacrifices are being commemorated on next week. But Putnam County and Palatka, we've got to talk about this stuff, because people are hurting, you know, and many times, they'll gripe outside of public forums, on social media and other places, but we've got to have logical conversations so that outside forces don't determine our inside fate. We don't want supremacists or anti-abolition, whatever it may be. We don't want these other groups to bring their problems into our community, but we also want our community to be able to have positive dialogue and determine how our future goes. And so I'm suggesting, and we're planning a town hall, I'm planning a town hall meeting. The tentative date is going to be Monday, August 28th, at 6:00 PM at the Price Martin Center. And it's a town hall meeting for our citizens to come out and for our leaders to stand together, so that we start to address our past, that we talk about our present, and we preserve our future. After we have that meeting, and it's not going to be one meeting that's going to determine all of this, but it's going to stimulate dialogue, which will help build our communities, the next phase of this is that we're going to have a consecration service once again called One Palatka Under God, or One Putnam Under God, where we all get together, and the Bronson Mulholland House is going to be that place, because it's the one place symbolically within this community where the Union and the Confederacy came... within this community where the Union and the Confederacy came together, where freedmen were educated in eighteen sixty-nine. It's historic in so many ways, and it, it symbolizes the unity that needs to be in this community, because in the midst of everything that's taking place, we've got to come together. And so, my plea is that we all consciously start to think about what the other position is, whether it's preservation of heritage, or it's conservation of history, we've got to determine the fate of this community, and we've got to come together as Palatcas and Putnam Countyans, and start to have a dialogue that many people frown upon. I can tell you that there are some things in this community that make me numb, and I go blind when I go past them, and I continue to walk, but I can't do that anymore, because sometimes, when you, when you close your eyes to certain things and you continue to move on without them, it only takes a small incident for that hurt to come back out. So let's talk about those things, and let's move this community forward. And that's all, I thank you for my, thank you for the time that you allotted me.
Mayor Hill, thank you so much, and we do appreciate that. We do have a budget meeting that day, but we will be there if we can in all possibility, and we will look to working forward to, to just bringing our community back together, and hearing from our citizens of how they want to bridge that gap, and move this county, and move all of our municipalities forward. And again, you know, if you, if you saw some of the papers in some of the areas outside of Putnam County, kind of like poking the bear, they were just, it was antagonistic for no reason at all. We're a wonderful community. And I went to Palatka Central High School, and Coach Cooper had a nickname for me, and I'll tell you what it was, it was Foot's. Yeah, I had a big foot, and I had to wear big shoes, and he always called me Foot's, but he was a good man, and one of my football coaches, and, and he did, when the two schools, Central and South, came together back in seventy-eight, was the first class, I was in seventy-nine, we didn't have all those tensions that we had, that people thought we were, we were supposed to have. We healed and moved forward, and we were fine. But we don't need outsiders telling us who we are, we need to tell ourselves who we are, and we know who we are. So, Mayor Hill, you have my commitment to work together, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that takes care of that. Our next item of business is our public comment portion of the meeting. You do not have to fill out a blue card in order to speak. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate, or deliberations on any matters the board has not received, no prior information as part of the agenda. We will ask you to limit your talk to three minutes, if you can, you're not going to get gonged or nothing if you run over a little bit. Public comment cards are in the back of the room, the blue ones, if you feel you need to fill one out. If, we will go through those first, and then we'll invite the rest of the public. So, at first, Caroline Swoop was asked to be our first speaker today, so if you'd please come up. Ms. Caroline, thank you. Mr. Goddard will be keeping time today.
I got it, just a few minutes, don't worry. Good morning, Carolyn Swoop, one thirty-seven Oak Crest Drive, Interlaken.
Could you speak up just a little more?
Okay, maybe, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
That's better, very much, yeah.
Good morning. Carolyn Swoop, one thirty-seven Oak Crest Drive, Interlaken. Perception is reality. Last week, the Putnam County Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments voted in approval for an adult entertainment complex to be located in Highway seventeen in East Palatka. This zoning variance was requested by Capital City Bank of Tallahassee, Florida, for a currently vacant building. The vote was five to three, with one board member abstaining. The zoning was changed to allow all uses pertaining to adult entertainment, all uses. Thus, Chairperson Linda Osborne voted in favor of an X-rated bookstore on Highway seventeen. Board Member Ron West voted in favor of an adult hotel motel on Highway seventeen. Board Member Earl Ballengee voted in favor of an escort service on Highway seventeen.
All right, well, Ms. Swoop, I do not want you calling people out.
Well, this is public record, sir.
That's fine, but we're not going to name names.
Okay, another one voted in favor of allowing live, adult-only performances on Highway seventeen. Another board member voted in favor of an adult massage parlor on Highway seventeen. Unfortunately, perception is reality. This county, county struggles with a negative image problem. The Putnam County Chamber of Commerce tries to promote family-friendly opportunities available here, like ecotourism and our attractive lakes and green spaces. How can this award-winning chamber put a smiley face on this X-rated complex? Perhaps the chamber could send out publicity with this sentiment. Y'all come on down to Highway seventeen in East Palatka and remember what happens in Putnam County stays in Putnam County. Unfortunately, pornography is all over the internet, but this addiction has got to start someplace. Giving government approval to this complex sends the message that this is an acceptable activity. Parents can block pornography images from their home computers, but not from young eyes traveling down Highway seventeen. Any business has a right to advertise, no doubt, the signage will be prominent and enticing. I have been told that this is already a done deal. Might I remind you that the sale of the landfill was also a done deal, until we, the people of Putnam County, fought it. In my opinion, the first step would be to contact Capital City Bank and tell them that this adult complex is not welcome here. Banks do not like negative publicity. Once the word gets out, I expect churches and other family-oriented organizations will join the protest. In closing, I leave you with this quote attributed to Edmund Burke. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swoop, we appreciate your comments. Ms. Fay Sparkman is our next speaker. Good morning, Mayor Larson, thank you for being here today. We've already taken care of the business, so I apologize, we were pretty quick today, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm one of the ones that sit on the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments, but I do my homework. And when I saw this case on my packet, I had to sit down and read it three times. So before the meeting, I went over to Stacy Mannings, and I asked him if this shouldn't have been looked at by the board first, he said no. So when it came time to start listening to Capital City Bank, I asked if we could please postpone this until everybody had time to do their research. I did my research. I talked to some people that were here when we had one of these here in Palatka, and it was closed down. I talked to some business owners, I did my homework. Everybody I've talked to was thoroughly against us, but it seems that the Board of County Commissioners didn't even need to know that this was coming before us. And the problem I have is Capital City Bank was the one doing the whole thing. We weren't even let to see who was going to go in this until it was a four-to-four vote. Then they called the lady up that's going to be running this, and then one person changed her vote, so it left at five to three. I went home from here, and I went into Publix, and I ran into one of our prominent people. And when I told them what happened, the look on their face was like, what just happened to our county? Here we are, trying to improve it, we have a developer that wants to do work, and do you think that developer, he could withhold if he finds out this is going there? The church down the road is not happy. I ran into a minister on Sunday morning who found out about it, and he says, what has happened to the morals of this county? And I said, the county and politics starts right here, in local, then it goes to state and it goes to federal. If we don't control our morals in this county, how are we going to teach our children? So when I left the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments that day, I was very, very upset. I'm still upset to think that we would want to have another adult center here. So the only thing we can do now is let every congregation in this county know, every doctor, every nurse, every teacher, all of you know what's going to happen. We don't need this in Putnam County. And I'm sorry, but I stuck up for my rights. And so, my advice to you is that each one of you might, should have a workshop with your attorney, and maybe your new county administrator, and see if this can be reversed or stop something. But we don't need our children seeing this, I'm sorry, we don't.
Ms. Sparkman, thank you very much, and don't ever be sorry for speaking up. Thank you. All right, that ends our blue cards. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Scarboroughski, one oh five West St. John's Terrace, East Palatka. I've been here two years, and I've been attending the city council meetings, and the speech the mayor gave touched my heart with tears of joy, for I see God working in this man's life, and what he said will touch the community. But another man came to our church and brought this horse in, with the bridle in his mouth controls the horse. I would just like to read James three to you, and Mr. Mayor, as we do have those council meetings, may you keep this in mind. Taming the tongue. Not many of you should become teachers, my fellow believers, because you know that we who teach will be judged more strictly. We all stumble in many ways. Anyone who is never at fault, as what they say is perfect, able to keep their whole body in check. When we put bits into the mouths of horses to make them obey, we can turn the whole animal. Or take a ship as an example. Although they are so large, are driven by strong winds, they are steered by a very small rudder, wherever the pilot wants to take them. Likewise, the tongue is a small part of the body, but it makes great boasts. Consider what a great forest is set on fire by a small spark. The tongue is also a fire, a world of evil among the parts of the body. It corrupts the whole body, sets the whole course of one's life on fire, and it is itself set by fire by hell. All kinds of animals, birds, reptiles, and sea creatures are being tamed, and have been tamed by mankind, but no human being can tame the tongue. It is a restless evil, full of deadly poison. With the tongue, we praise our Lord and Father, and with it, we curse human beings. We have been made in God's likeness. Out of that same mouth come praises and cursing. My brothers and sisters, this should not be. Can both freshwater and saltwater flow from the same spring? My brothers and sisters, can a fig tree bear olives? Or grapevine bear figs? Neither can salt spring from produce. Two kinds of wisdom, and this is the wisdom I've seen in our mayor. Who is wise in understanding among you? Let them show it by their good life, by deeds done in humility that comes from wisdom. But if you harbor bitterness, envy, and selfish ambitions in your hearts, do not boast about it and deny it. Such wisdom does not come from heaven, but is earthly, unspiritually demanding. For we, for where you have envy and selfish ambitions, dare you find disorder in every evil practice. But the wisdom that comes from heaven is first all pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere. Peacemakers who sow in peace reap a harvest of righteousness. So I'm continuing to pray for all of you.
Thank you.
For our sheriff, and for our mayor.
And we need it, and we thank you for coming today, sir. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Just wanted to take the opportunity, because of what's happening here this morning with the, with the message from the mayor, my mayor, and from the citizens here this morning. You know, we live in a world now, in a, in a time where there's, there's a lot of civil unrest, and a lot of, a lot of nervous people. And I just, you know, I had an opportunity last week to attend the Florida League of Cities Conference. Our keynote speaker there was Mr. David O. Brown, who was retired police chief for the city of Dallas, Texas. They, he had a very serious issue that took place in July of two thousand and sixteen in the city of, in the city of Dallas, where he had five law enforcement officers killed in the same day during line of duty. You know, we had some issues that we were concerned with for the city of Palatka, I think we're dealing with them. I'm proud to be a Palatca, and I'm proud to be here today, and hearing this conversation. But I wanted to take the opportunity this morning, if I could, I purchased the book by David O. Brown, talks about that day and the lives, and how they were affected by folks in the city of Dallas. And I just want to take a moment, if I can, a little privilege, if I may, sir, I'd like to ask Sheriff Gator Deloche if he would come up for just a minute. And, you know, I just want to say that between the chief of police in Palatka, Jason Shaw, and Sheriff Gator Deloche, I believe Putnam County and the city of Palatka are well poised to deal with any issues that come up. I believe we have a very professional staff on both sides, and I think they understand where we're at, and what we're trying to accomplish, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I'd like to take the opportunity this morning, and note, this may not be appropriate, but I'm going to do it anyway, I'm going to donate a book today to the sheriff's office, and I would like to present it to Sheriff Gator Deloche this morning, and let him know how much I'm looking forward to continuing a relationship that I have with my chief of police, now with the sheriff's office of Putnam County. And just want everybody to know that I think we're in great hands, and I'm looking forward to everything that we're doing here, and I really hope that some of this conversation this morning grows, and I think we're poised for great things here in Putnam County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me for just a few moments, I'd like to go back and revisit.
Well, I can't remove you from the microphone. You have a gun.
I'd like to go back and revisit Agenda Item Number Three, where Mr. Fuller actually made the presentation to Sergeant Kenny Roberts. And the purpose of me standing before you today is to actually go into a little greater depth and detail into Sergeant Roberts' actions that day, so that the, the board and the rest of our citizenry here has a full and complete understanding of his actions and what truly occurred there today. The, the citation that Mr. Fuller read was very brief and concise, and it was actually distributed prior to the awards banquet, so as to not spoil the surprise, if you will. So what I'd like to do is actually read the citation that was submitted to Crime Stoppers, which actually led to Sergeant Roberts receiving the award. You'll have to bear with me, because I don't have my glasses with me today, and it's very small print, so just bear with me, if you will.
Everybody's got them up in the audience, I hear.
On March third, twenty sixteen, a residential alarm brought members of the sheriff's office, South District, to the area of Buffalo Bluff Road. It was determined the alarm was set off due in part to an unsecured door to residence. After searching and securing the residence, deputies stood by, waiting for the homeowner to arrive to check the residence. It was during this period of time that a bridge tender for CSX contacted the sheriff's office after noticing a person walking along the railroad tracks while carrying a large bag. As a safety precaution, the bridge tender raised the trestle to dissuade the trespasser from attempting to walk across the drawbridge into Palatka. As deputies were still in the general area due to the alarm, their response was nearly immediate to the call of the trespasser walking along the railroad tracks. The bridge tender noticed the male subject, witnessed patrol cars traveling along the roadway, so he ran down the railroad track embankment and into the swamp. Sergeant Roberts, Deputy Joe Lee, I'm sorry, Deputy Joe Abbott, and Michael Wells searched the area until they located the area where the subject ran into the heavily wooded area. Sergeant Roberts felt the urge to continue searching for the subject due to the strangeness surrounding the event which made the male run at the mere sight of law enforcement. Sergeant Roberts, Deputy Abbott, and Wells continued their pursuit only by tracking the subject's trail through several miles of dense vegetation, and also crossing over three small creeks. The officer's pursuit pushed the subject into the edge of the St. John's River, where he was found hiding beneath some fallen trees. The subject was found to be using a pair of binoculars to track the officers as they searched for him. After being taken into custody, Sergeant Roberts confirmed the suspect's identity as none other than Jerry Keane, Jr., who was wanted on active warrants out of Putnam County, Alachua, and Marion. Keane had been out of the Florida prison system for less than one year, and his active warrants included charges of resisting officers with violence, and he was also wanted in questioning for a homicide in Marion County. Once in custody, Keane admitted to numerous residential and commercial burglaries in Putnam County, but more importantly, led authorities to the location of the man's body he was responsible for killing. They also found the firearm he had used to kill the man with, and also information to where the man's vehicle was left. Keane also provided info- Keane also provided information leading authorities to a church van he had stolen from a church in Palaca and abandoned in Marion County. The arrest of Keane was only due to the perseverance and strong leadership Sergeant Roberts displayed. The insistence of tracking a person on what appeared to be a minor offense of trespassing led to the capture of an extremely violent career criminal who would only have continued his attack against the moral safety and peace of mind of the public he targeted. I just wanted to take an opportunity to share that with you, just to paint a little better picture of what Sergeant Roberts' actions and Deputy Abbott and Deputy Wells were actually representative of that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate that. Okay, is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak? Please come up and state your name.
Janet Smith, Palaca. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want our community to get along. I really do. And it's unfortunate that people really don't understand their history, and there are parts of history that people identify and part that people abhor. And I would like to suggest that one of the solutions might be, wouldn't it be nice if there was a statue of Harriet Tubman put up at the courtyard? Wouldn't it be nice if there was a memorial to the Underground Railroad? Wouldn't it be nice to recognize Frederick Douglass, which I bet most people haven't heard that name? You should look it up. Why don't we put some of the other sides of history instead of taking one part? And by the way, the Civil War did not start over what many people think it did. It had to do with states' rights, states' rights being the things that were to hold the federal government in check. The federal government had imposed taxation on the South for exportation of their cotton. They did not want them to sell that to England. In fact, if you'll look up John C. Calhoun, look at his resignation. I would like to say that we don't have the whole story, so why don't we pull out some of the good parts and put it out there?
I agree. We'll see you on the 28th at 6 o'clock at the Price Martin Center, so I'm looking forward to that. Anybody else from the public would like to speak before this commission? All right, seeing now we're going to close our public comment portion of our agenda. And commissioners, we're going to move to consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K. I, J, and K were amendments to your packet yesterday afternoon. I do want to stop for just a moment and thank Mr. Manning and all the department heads. Ms. Papel, if you've been noticing on your packets, department heads are now signing off that the items have been through and been vetted, and they meet budgetary. They don't have the financial impact statement yet, but we're working on that. But we've come a long way, and I want to say publicly, thank you so much for that, because we need that review to happen throughout here. And it's a review of finance, it's a review of county attorney, it's a review of every department that touches it, so we thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to pull?
Yes. I'd like D, E, and H.
All right, Commissioner Pickens, any items you'd like to pull?
Yeah, E and H.
Okay. Commissioner Goddard, you have the floor, sir, on item D.
Okay, yeah, these would be for Mr. Gass.
Okay, Mr. Gass, would you please come to the podium?
On item D, you have two contractors. That is just to make things easier, is what I'm assuming.
Yes, we chose a primary contractor, and then the next highest-rated contractor became the secondary contractor. Even though a contractor is bound by contract to support you, if there is a major disaster, it is nice to have a secondary contract sitting there that you can just call up to get additional help if it's necessary. We had two contractors in this past current three-year process. We had Tag Grinding as the primary, and Crowder Gulf was the secondary. But Tag was successful in getting the crews out here and getting things done immediately. When you're trying to get disaster debris up, you don't have time for litigation, so it's prudent that you would have two contractors, one a primary, which they'll be notified they're a primary, and the other the secondary, so that if you have any issues, you already have a bid process that's been done that meets the FEMA requirements. You can go to that second contractor and get the assistance that's necessary.
Okay, yeah, the only reason I bring that up is because at the tail end, we did have some problems getting the primary contractor. I know they had their own problems, but, you know.
The thing is, is that the tail end is, by the time the other contractor would get mobilized, you've already got it picked up by the prime contractor. The big thing is, is to get your rapid response, to get things moving initiated. That's why two contractors are generally chosen.
Okay, yeah, that's all my questions on that one. And since you're there, let's go to Eve, if that's okay.
Please, you have the floor, sir.
On this one, I understand the events that happened, and you ended up in basics with a brand-new rebuilt motor, correct?
Correct. It was a rebuilt.
It looked like everything that could have possibly been replaced was replaced.
Not everything was replaced. It was a base motor. You know, you still got the drivetrain. Everything else has not been replaced. It's just the engine portion of the piece of equipment.
What I didn't notice is if you had purchased a remanufactured motor, you'd have a warranty. And we spent more on this than we would have on a remanufactured. I understand the, I deal with these engines all the time, but they're not sitting in a crate on somebody's shelf. I understand.
This was a remanufactured engine.
That was your engine that was rebuilt, though.
I believe this engine actually came out of Germany.
Yeah, this one came.
Okay, this is the Germany engine.
This.
What kind of warranty do we have on this engine?
Fleet generally handles those options. It is.
Mr. Rulon, say your name for the record.
Bill Rulon, Fleet Maintenance.
No, that's not, that's a light.
Sorry about that. Bill Rulon, Fleet Maintenance.
Doesn't get out of Fleet Maintenance most, do you?
But anyways, there is a warranty on the engine. Unfortunately, I don't have the term of that provided today. Wasn't something I hadn't thought of, because we had been discussing some of the conditions associated with the engine and the replacement of it. But certainly, I can get that information to you.
Okay, that's my concern, especially for what we spent, that I want a warranty.
But it is verbally, they told me there is a warranty on it, so I'll get that term for you.
Okay.
Commissioner Pickens, you have a question.
Yeah, in relation with the engine, and I understand the engine failed maybe due to the intake system and maybe the filtering there, and probably the hours that was on the engine. And I understand that under inspection of the engine, it was cheaper to go with a long block or a complete engine reman rather than rebuild that one. My question is evidently probably the, if it was the air intake system that failed, maybe due to extra sand or dust during the drought that we had? Is there anything that you're going to look to, to Caterpillar or whoever services Bill, to maybe step up the frequency of changing the filter so this won't happen again?
Well, what we've done since that date, and I just did a little research with respect to that, this scenario that began in the beginning of May, the unit had been serviced by the manufacturer, by Ring Power, I should say, on March 9th at 4,800 hours. This incident occurred at 5,000 hours, so it's about, what, 200 hours, give or take? Not even 200 hours since, and that just gives you an idea of the amount of harsh environment because of the drought situation that was going on. What we've done since then, we supplied the sanitation department with brand-new clean filters that they can put in there. What they generally have been doing all along would be to remove the filter cartridges. They blow them out with the compressor, clean all the dust and dirt debris off them, and then place them back in there. And the normal 300-hour service agreement that is in place would cover the replacement of them. Now, obviously, in the situation with the environment at the time, the drought and so forth, that produced a lot more debris in the air, which accelerated the situation. But yes, we've taken steps to ensure that this does not happen, that they have clean filters at their location, should it become necessary, not just relying on blowing off the dirt and putting the old ones back in. You know, this filtering question here is way back inside of the housing for the air filters. You almost have to reach up to your shoulder to grab it, whereas there's a long cylindrical one that they have been pulling out, cleaning, pushing back in, whether or not they knew it was in there or saw it in there. But that was the one that initially failed and had sucked through. And again, it was a short period of hours, but when it did that, and that's how much debris was coming in from the air due to the environment at the time. So it's an unfortunate thing, but, you know, typically, in the past, you know, the machine shouldn't have even been there with respect to its age because of the environment at the landfill. We, what, five years is generally our.
We should get 10,000 hours on an engine if it's maintained and taken care of. And this one was a little over half its lifespan. We have in the budget next year to have the complete track job done, because that's going to be done, but that was budgeted before this happened. That was placed in the budget, because it's reaching the hours where you've got to get your undercarriage or your tracks replaced, all that kind of stuff. And generally, you can get close to 10,000 hours out of a piece of heavy equipment in a landfill environment. You're looking generally at 12,000 or more in a general construction environment, but landfills are much harsher and will take that extra 2,000 hours right off the top as soon as it gets in there. You've got to remember, at the time that this happened was when we were under burn ban, we were under, excuse me, a tremendous drought. We had dust everywhere at the landfill. It was nothing but one giant Sahara Desert is what it was. And it was difficult. And working together, we were going to have the replacement filters. We were even going through fuel filters. There was so much dust rapidly. So we're going to have those filters available to be able to replace them in a timely manner if things start happening.
Okay, thank you. What's a new machine like that cost?
You're looking probably close to 190. If you get the landfill package on it, you're probably up to about 235. Because the landfill package has got seals, guards everywhere that a typical bulldozer does not have seals and guards.
I do have a question, well, not a question, I'll make a statement. Gentlemen, if you look at page 118 of your packet, I did a little research, because when I read this, some people don't think I read the whole packet, but I do, and it said, "Engine ran with no air filters." I called Ring Power, and they assured me, Joe McKenzie did, that that was a misprint on their statement, and they will be glad to fix it, so our public doesn't think that we're running these engines with no air filters in them. But he agreed to do that. Bill, you might want to reach out to him and say, "We'd like to have that, because we don't want people thinking that we're running our equipment without proper air filters and things like that."
Yeah, I did notice that in there as well. And what that was, is we sent out our mechanic to check the machine, and that's when it was determined that ripped filter. He removed the filters, and then we called Ring Power out to do the service on the machine. So the mechanic saw the filters were out, assumed it ran without the filters, but it was just the downtime.
It never did. I just wanted the public to know that, because that's important. Okay, commissioners, any other questions on those two items? I know Commissioner Goddard, do you also have item, is that item, no, Commissioner Pickens, item H?
No, that's mine.
Oh, that's you, too?
I think both of us.
Okay. Don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Press.
Well, we've kind of let you go first the last two times. Should we let Commissioner Pickens? Commissioner Pickens, I'll give you the floor, sir.
Just for me and the audience and the viewing audience, just update us on where we are with the Fort Gates ferry and then why we have to enter into this submerged land lease.
Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. This is just part of the process we're going through. We're at about 30% plans on the east side for the ferry landing. This is one that we have to get a submerged lands lease from the state, because that is waters of the state. This is what they call a temporary easement that allows us to go ahead and go through the remainder of our process. DOT is reviewing our plans now. As soon as we get to go ahead from them, then we can start finishing our design and advertising to have the east landing done. They are diligently working to put a proposal together, because we got money reallocated to the west landing, so we'll work on that also, which will require another submerged lands lease. So this is some of the bureaucracy we have to go through to get our projects done.
Thank you. Commissioner Goddard?
That was my same. I wanted you to present it, because I appreciate what you're doing. It's a very important aspect for our county, and I do know, I wanted everyone to understand just how many things you have to do just to accomplish this event.
It is a process, and believe me, we go through every step of it.
Mr. Tompkins, when Mr. Manning and I were in the Eisenhower Executive Office at the White House up there, one of the speakers said that on federal projects, if one agency signs off, it's good enough for the project and no more agencies have to sign off. Ms. Wilkinson, would you please let Representative Payne know, we would love that if we have one state project, we just, everybody signs off and we're done with this, because this, and ginger you old, that'll, yeah, you got, so it would just be so beneficial to, I mean, this was driven by the state, and now we have to go through all this stuff just to get something done. It is crazy.
I don't know if that's filtered all the way down to our level yet, but I agree with you. It would be very nice that we have to go through 18 agencies to get one permit, so. But we're doing the best we can with it, and we are progressing with it.
I know, and it's so frustrating to be sitting where we're at and the calls we get, and I guess that's the most frustrating part of this job, is it's so slow sometimes to get projects done. And it's not your fault. It's the way the process works. Okay, commissioners, are there any other comments for Mr. Tompkins? Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion for items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K.
I move to accept.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to accept those items.
Second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussions on the matter? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Number seven on our agenda, appointments. Commissioners, are there any appointments that you're free to make today?
I have none.
I have none.
I have one, District Four Fair Authority. Mr. Tim Campbell with Miller Blueberry Plantation has agreed to serve in that position. And Mr. Manning, real quickly, the fishing fund.
Yeah, I'm.
We're still working on that one.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is bring a resolution to you, hoping in the first meeting in September, to make those changes that you all had discussed at the last workshop, to increase the membership on that by one additional at-large individual, and then basically start anew for all of the appointments. So I was going to, if you were going to make an appointment today, I was going to ask that you nod, because we're going to have all new appointments on that, and that'll be coming to you in September.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion of Mr. Tim Campbell for Fair Authority.
I move to accept.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. County Administrator, Mr. Stacy Manning, Antrim County Administrator.
This item, as you know, is for you all to vote on and hopefully accept the agreement, the employment agreement to bring Mr. Terry Suggs on as your new county administrator, as directed at our last meeting. Mr. Suggs and I did sit down and battle it out, and I think what we have come up with is an amicable agreement, and you all have had the opportunity to look through it, and if you have any questions for me or Mr. Suggs, I'm sure we're both more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Manning, I appreciate you reaching out to all of us, too. Mr. Manning, I appreciate you reaching out to all of us, too, and getting our input on it. I'm going to start off and say, I think this employment agreement is exactly what I was looking for as a commissioner. And it gives the board very good duties to take care of Mr. Suggs or any county administrator from this point on. So I'm very happy with the, with the contract as presented. Commissioner Goddard?
I'm very pleased with it.
Also, very pleased.
Okay. And y'all don't look too bloodied up, so you must not have had to fight too bad at it.
Well, we heal quick.
Okay, good, good. All right, commissioners, is there any motion?
Motion to accept, yes. I'll make that motion to accept.
We have a motion by Commissioner Goddard to accept the employment agreement for Putnam County Administrator with Terry Suggs.
I'll second it.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Suggs. You're officially our county administrator starting September 25th. Thank you. Mr. Suggs, I was asked on the radio this morning, was it a hard decision taking you from the city of Palaca for the work that you've done there? And I said, you know, that was really one of my defining pivot points in my interviews with you was you were doing so well with Palaca, I just did not want to see that messed up. But I have to look out for the county as a whole and I'm glad you're on board and we look forward to you starting September 25th. So thank you very much. Commissioners, any other comment? For Mr. Suggs?
I'm just excited to have you onboard and look forward to working with you soon.
Yeah, I'll say the same thing. I think it's going to be a great relationship.
So now, do you want to sit up here with us? For what?
No, sir, not today. But no, and honestly, thank you so much for the opportunity again, and I appreciate those comments. It was a difficult decision for me as well, whether or not to apply or not because of what was happening in City of Palaca and I felt so proud of what we were doing, the work of my commissioners, the work of my staff, our community in general, it's doing extremely well. But it was an opportunity that presented itself that I just really couldn't, couldn't let pass by without an opportunity to put my name in the hat and see where we, where we fell with it. And I'm just as proud as I can be to be standing here today. And my last comment is Stacy, absolutely, we sat down, we hammered some stuff out, had a little back and forth, and he's right, I think we both healed up pretty quickly. Got this thing done on behalf of not only you commissioners, but also for the community so we can get this thing taken care of and get started. And my last comment is, thank you for not making me take my pen off this morning, so.
And you know, Mr. Suggs, let me say this, you know, we've had joint meetings with Lachoo County, Marion County Commissioners, City of Palaca, we want to reach out to the other municipalities. It's been years in the making for any relationships to happen and we're, what, two miles from each other?
Absolutely.
For some reason? I don't expect that that will stop because you're going to be over on this side. I really expect that we'll continue our relationships with the City of Palaca as well as the other municipalities. I think now will just be enhanced, is what I think.
Well, I appreciate that and absolutely, we need to continue reaching out to not only our sister cities here in Putnam County, but also to our surrounding communities. I think it's very crucial in these times that we're dealing with, with economic development and things that are changing, that we continue having dialogue with all those folks. And, you know, my, my history in Lachoo County will, hopefully will carry some, carry us over there and we'll be able to have some good conversations, Clay County as well. So I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be great for all of us to sit at the same table and have a lot of this dialogue. And one of the things I'm going to try to get going here, we were part of it in Clay County, the manager of Clay County and the municipal managers got together monthly to discuss issues and concerns and offer, offer assistance. And I want to do that here. I know some of our municipalities don't necessarily have a city manager or town manager, but the mayors and the commissioners over there, I'd like to work closely with them so we can bring some issues, you know, to you folks and maybe work together on fixing some of the concerns that they may have as well. I think the more communication, the more honest dialogue that we have with each other will do nothing but benefit all of Putnam County. But again, thank you for the, for the opportunity, thank you for the approval of the contract this morning, and I look forward to getting started on September 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, clerk of the court, Mr. Kenny Downs replacing Tim Smith today, the Honorable Tim Smith.
Thank you very much. And Tim Smith is at a conference this week and sorry he couldn't be here, but I want to congratulate the commission and Stacy Manning on the contract. And I will tell you that I watched Terry Suggs at the city as well as you have and worked closely with him on several things. And this is, this is a really a bright time in our future because the county and the city for many years struggled to resolve minor issues. And I think that the light at the end of the tunnel is bright at this point for our county. And I congratulate each one of y'all on the reception that you had, all the public events that you had, and you just did a great job. And I look forward for Mr. Suggs and the county to move not only quickly, but in a bright way. So I thank you for that. I'd also like one other thing, is to thank, and I'm glad Mayor Hill's still here, to thank him and the city police department for this past weekend, the sheriff's office. He was exactly right. You know, there were, and I, I'm glad that somebody else brought it up so I could say something about it, but, because I wasn't. But they worked very closely together and we had no problems in our community and I thank everyone for that. And thank you for your efforts and both teams for their efforts, all the men that put a lot of time in over the weekend. We thank you for that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. We appreciate that. County Attorney Spot, I bypassed that one, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing to add, thanks.
Forget that he wears two hats, so we have to do that. Commissioner Comment, starting to my left, Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. I'd just like to make a comment. Back on Saturday, August 12th, my wife and I were lucky enough to volunteer for a program that State Representative Bobby Payne and Senator Perry out of Gainesville worked with Farm Share, and it was a food giveaway which was held at the parking lot at the courthouse. And Leota Wilkinson, she was there, and you may want to make a few comments. But it was, it was a great event. I think we served over 250 families with food and a lot of volunteers. I think it was a Sunrise Rotary Club, I know Terry Suggs was there, the Sheriff's Department, Gator Deloach and Colonel Joe Wells participated. And it was a really neat event. It was really hot and I think it's the hottest I've been in a long time. But I just want to say, the people who benefited from that, they were the most polite, gracious, patient people that I've seen at a food distribution since I've been doing some of these. So I just want to say hats off to the community, Rotary Club, all of the volunteers. I know somebody from the Palaca Police Department was also there. And it was just a joint effort and to thank Bobby Payne and also Senator Perry, so thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson, you want to say anything? No? Okay, good, good. All right. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, I want to thank our community. It's, when you do hear of other things going on in other counties, other states, we're very blessed, very, very, very blessed. I personally want to thank our mayor. Our mayor has been on top of a lot of things that a lot of people don't know about, but also that he let Terry Suggs come over here. I was afraid he was just going to grab him and hold him and not let him go. I also want to take this moment to thank our sheriffs. They do a tremendous job. I hear a lot of things out there, what's going on, and it's all good. They have a dirty job and they're keeping it clean and I really appreciate that. I do have one more thing.
Yes, sir, please.
I'd like to put in motion, if we could, a moratorium on the internet cafe, what we need to do at this point.
We talked about that recently and.
Yeah, it's in the works and that'll be coming before you. I think that's also going to be the first meeting in September, but it is, it is coming before you, it's already in the works.
We had, let me, if I can follow up on that, though, we did want to do an inventory of our current internet cafes out there somehow. I know the sheriff's department is working on something like that, but we got to be able to identify the current ones we have and the moratorium will be on future ones.
Correct.
Coming in, so not the ones that are going through the system now. So you're going to be bringing that to us pretty soon.
Yes, Mr. Hammonds is working on getting all that put together and be reviewing it and bringing it back before you.
Good, good. I do, I have a comment that I'd like to make. This coming Thursday night, Interlaken High School, Ultimate Game Day 2017, First Coast News, Channel 12 and 25 will be in Interlaken at the high school. The children out there, the kids voted and voted and voted to be the school of choice throughout the region. So it's going to be a big event. It's a big pep rally, if you will, that'll be televised throughout the season. And this is a chance for Putnam County to shine. So whether you're a Palaca Panther or a Cresson City Raider, whoever you are, Interlaken Ram, Mayor, I'm sure you'll be there, you know, please come out and support this. You know, rising tide lifts all ships and when Interlaken can rise up a little bit, let's celebrate that. Our Rotary Club is going to be cooking pulled pork dinners and we look forward to that. And we just want to have a big celebration of what the kids at Interlaken High School really did to promote themselves. And I believe we all should be there if we can possibly do it. So that's my little plug. And if there's no other further business, this meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you.